Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson and chief of school committee. Welcome to our meeting of April 28. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on South Coast Channel 29 and 229, and through live on TV and web sites. I'd like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah, as well as Chief Public Schools IT Director Brian. We will help with all of our meetings.
First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is chairperson and members' report. Does anyone have anything this evening?
May I?
Oh, go ahead, Lindsay.
I just want to acknowledge all of the teachers and parents this week. All of the middle schoolers got back to school in my house. That meant all kids were back in school. And just the incredible effort to try to figure out how to bring two different teams back together, and then a third team as well, as we put B and C and D all back in rooms together, and of course, our A students. But it has been an interesting transition. I know, just from looking on Facebook, there are many parents who are feeling a lot of relief. I hope many teachers are feeling more completeness in their classrooms, but certainly, there has been a lot of joy that I have been seeing just amongst neighborhood parents that we are getting back to something normal. But that goes bearers saying a huge thank you to the many members of administration and the countless hours to figure out how to do this and how to do it safely. And I would just encourage people in the community who are not yet enrolled in our COVID testing program to consider doing that as one way to make sure that we keep kids safe and our staff safe at this time. So, an exciting milestone. I'm sure we'll hear more about it from Dr. Sawyer, but from a parent's perspective, saying thank you. And I know we have high school yet to go, just another week, you know, five, six days from now. So, we're getting there, and I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything? Thank you. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. A few highlights I'd like to share with the community this evening. First off, I'd like to congratulate the Shrewsbury High School Student Council. They have been named for the fourth year in a row, a Gold Council of Excellence by the National Association of Student Councils for the very high quality of their programming and their leadership. So, congratulations to those students. I also want to congratulate the students from our speech and debate team who recently competed at Nationals, Sanjana Yadav, Dan Kalasian, Ratika Prasad, Shalini Bijju, and Ria Kanzra. And very pleased to let you know that Ria Kanzra is actually the 2021 national champion in humorous interpretation, and will be honoring Ria along with some state champions as well. They will honor at a future school committee meeting. So, congratulations to Ria on that unbelievable achievement. And then I also want to share with the community that while we certainly look for lots of different measures of quality of our schools, one that gets a lot of attention in the media is the annual U.S. News and Report Ranking of High Schools. Very pleased that Shrewsbury remains at the very high level of a silver medalist level in the top 5.5% of over 17,860 high schools that were ranked. And there's also another category that they have not had in many past years, where they've ranked all high schools according to their success in the STEM subjects, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And according to U.S. News, Shrewsbury High School is in the top 0.003%, top 1% of all high schools in the United States when it comes to STEM achievement, 58th out of all those high schools. Within Massachusetts, ranked within the top 12%, and that's Massachusetts, not surprisingly, is ranked as the highest performing state for high school achievement in the nation. So, that's something that we can be very proud of. This is based on results from, I believe, the 2018-2019 school year. And again, that's an achievement that everyone pre-K through grade 12, because certainly, it starts at the youngest levels and builds throughout the elementary and the middle school years for our students to be successful ultimately at the high school level. So, our community can be very proud of those results relative to our peers across the state and across the nation. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update on the district's response to the pandemic, as well as the reopening of our schools. I'll turn it back to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I'll begin, as always, with the key messages that the health and well-being of our students and families and staff is our first priority. That's been something we've kept right at the center of our bullseye, our planning throughout the year. Our focus has been to provide a safe school environment that also prioritizes not only well-being, but enables high levels of learning for all, and that we are operating based on guidance from health authorities. We just got some updated guidance today for graduation, for example, that I know Mr. Bizilov and his team are looking at to make final preparation or begin their final planning for that annual event that this year will take place outdoors in the Shrewsbury High School stadium, as it did last year as well. Currently, our case counts have remained pretty low. We've had a couple of weeks in a row. You'll see in a moment of five. We've had six so far this week to date. I know there was some concern about numbers spiking after the April school vacation last week. We haven't quite seen that yet. Hoping those numbers stay moderate for the rest of this week. We've had six in our hybrid model and two in the remote program so far this week. You can see the totals there. The next slide showing you the last four weeks as of the end of the last calendar week. You can see that's been a nice trend. You might recall there was a number of about 20 or so a week or two before that. It's come down to 13, seven, and then two weeks in a row of five cases in our hybrid program as well. The public health data from the Johns Hopkins Institute that they track by states, Massachusetts remains very low relative to other states. It's come down since I last reported three weeks ago to 1.74% is our statewide positivity rate. And you can see in the next slide that the last state report, Shrewsbury, was at 2.25% against that 5% benchmark as of April 22. Next slides show some of our cases according to the schools in district. These are our totals for the entire year as far as our cases across the different schools. The next slide shows just this past three-week period since I last reported to you. You can see that it's spread across mostly the upper grades, very few in the younger grades over the last three weeks. The next slide shows the student cases by grade, of course, across the year, which, of course, when you smooth that out to more of a grade-level cohort, you can see the differences are not that dramatic across the different grade levels. And you can see that we still, you know, the fewest cases are among our youngest students in pre-K and K. But beyond that, you know, ranges from anywhere from 15 up to the mid to high 30s in the high school range. The next slide shows those student cases by grade over the last three weeks. And you can say in recent times, it's really been spread, not concentrated at all on one particular level. And that, if you can see, and that's, you know, a maximum of two on the scale there. So, it's really been, you know, multiple cases spread across multiple grades over the past three-week period. This next graph shows the cases by week. And again, you can see that over the course of the year, that spike during the November, December, January time period, and then coming down over time, a little bit of an uptick in early March, and then, again, coming back down to the levels we're at now. And we're hopeful, as we've seen in some of the general reporting for the state, and with more, even despite the fact that the state has opened up quite a bit over the last several weeks, those numbers have remained relatively low. And obviously, with more people vaccinated, we hope that that trend, we see that continue. As far as suspected in-school transmission, excuse me, there are still just eight cases of suspected in-school transmission. We have not had any additional cases of potential in-school transmission since I last reported to you in early April. As far as vaccines, Noel Freeman, our director of school nursing, pulled our staff again yesterday. Over 750, that's a vast majority of our staff, had responded. 68% of our staff at this point are fully vaccinated. They're 14 days or more beyond their final dose. Another 23% have received both doses of either Moderna or Pfizer, but aren't quite at that 14-day mark yet. They will be soon, of course. 4.5%, that's about 34 people or so, I think, are not planning to get the vaccine. Sometimes that's because of their own medical situation. Sometimes staff members who are pregnant are choosing not to get it. But again, very small percentage. And then 4% have received their first dose, and they're waiting on their second dose. And then, less than 1% actually are waiting for their first dose, but they are currently scheduled, and a very tiny percentage have not been able to schedule an appointment. And Ms. Freeman, of course, is helping them with that as well. So, it's a very good news story. We're at a very, very high level of vaccination rate among our staff, which certainly gives them peace of mind in terms of being now all the way through grades K through 8, back fully in high school, scheduled to get back in full with everybody on campus on this coming Monday. And that's how I'll wrap up this update, is really to say a huge thank you to our staff, a huge thank you to our families and our students. I was able to visit Oak Middle School today. Today was their first day with all the students coming back in person, and the energy was very positive. Kids felt good. They said it felt a little weird to have that many kids in their class again, but there were a lot of smiles behind those masks. And teachers also very positive about having everybody there at once, not needing to Zoom to kids at home at the same time you're working with kids in the classroom. And it was very smooth. I know we had some traffic at the beginning of the day, where it took a little longer than usual coming off of Oak Street there. I'm not sure what happened at the end of the day. I haven't had a report yet, but we'll try to work through that as best we can. And the Shrewsbury Police Department has been very helpful. Sean Valier, our school resource officer for the grades K through 8, has been assisting us, and we'll continue to try to mitigate that to the greatest extent we can. But overall, and I should mention too, you know, Sherwood came back after we last met the week prior to the school vacation, similarly, very successful. And it really, I do want people watching to know that the logistics to make this work well were really extraordinarily complex, and it took not only a lot of complex planning, but then a lot of rolling up of sleeves and a lot of sweat work to get all these, you know, additional furniture in place, moved around. And I will share in subsequent communications some photographs of, you know, desks. And we have a tent at Oak Middle School, because we can't fit all of our students at six-foot distancing when they eat, just in the cafeteria and the gym. We needed to put a tent out behind the gym, which has about 54, I think, desks in it where kids can be six feet apart. So, at lunchtime at Oak, you've got the cafeteria, you've got the gymnasium, and you've got this large tent all full of kids, six feet apart, eating. But I think certainly, again, that the sense was kids were happy to be there, and the work that we've invested in this certainly is paying off. We very much appreciate everything that everyone has done, and all signs are looking great for a successful return at the high school on Monday. So, again, we continue to follow guidance from experts as we look at maintaining a safe environment and focusing now on making sure that whatever these new guidelines are, that we're focused on, that we're implementing them correctly. We certainly don't want to have any lapses with people getting overly comfortable. We know the masking and the distancing, appropriate distancing, and making sure, you know, continuing to emphasize our pool testing program. All these things are helping us have that multi-layered approach to help maintain a safe situation in our schools. And we are already experiencing major benefits as a result of this return to full in-person school. So, that is the update this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments the committee has.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Jason?
Just want to extend my compliments as during our last meeting after the elementary school reopening to the administration and all of our staff at every level, as well as to the students and families who executed reopenings and re-entries that seem to have gone flawlessly. And given the level of logistical lift involved there, given the level of disruption, you know, I know for a lot of families, they're very excited to have kids go back, but from an organizational logistical perspective, this was a lot, and it seems to have gone very well. So, I just want to extend my compliments to everyone involved.
Thank you. And you raised a good point, Jim. It's a lot of moving parts, but families as well have had to probably make adjustments to their own work schedules and maybe finding different daycare, you know, issues as well. So, there's a lot of moving parts. And I think, Mr. Collins, you also were going to take vacation and didn't take vacation last week because there were things that you needed to do. So, I think the public needs to know there's a lot of extra effort that has gone into this, and we are ahead of schedule that the Department of Education has put out for the state for students to return to full-time learning. So, I think that's another fact that the community needs to be aware of, that we're moving even faster to get students back to where they need to be in full-time in-class learning. So, thank you to everybody who's been participating in that. So, nothing further for this? Okay. Next, we're going to move on under Finance and Operations. Tonight, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will present an update on the status of the FY '22 budget, and they will make a recommendation for a line item budget for the school department appropriated budget for fiscal year '22, which the school committee will be asked to vote to recommend to town meeting. And as you know, on the May 4, 2021 Annual Town Election, there is a question for an override. It's a $9.5 million override question, that is before the community, and it will add funding for municipal and school operating expenses. And the school committee voted unanimously on April 7 to put this before the community, and we know that the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, are also unanimously supporting this. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins to provide this budget update.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'm going to go through a series of slides here, and obviously, Mr. Collins can jump in at any time with any additional information, and then he will be happy to provide any specifics about the vote we're asking you to take this evening on the line item budget. But the first slide I'd like to refer you to is a scene that some of us who are old enough would see often on the highways and byways of New England and the nation, which is the famous Howard Johnson's and their 28 flavors. And the reason I show this, and some of you may recall, a few years ago at a Finance Committee presentation, Mr. Collins made a reference to Howard Johnson's as a business case study. And go to the next slide, you can still see the same visual, but a quote from a report that talked about Howard Johnson's business case titled "The Rise and Fall of an American Icon." You can see the quote there talking about how their failure to provide value and an overemphasis on cost-cutting ultimately drove away their customers and led to their downfall. And that's something that I think is salient to what's occurring here. While one difference between our school district and our local town government in private business and enterprise is that we are not going to go out of business. There will be a school district in operation next year. The question is, what level of quality are we going to be providing to our customers, the youngest citizens of the town who attend our public schools, over 6,000 of them? And then, as a result, the services we provide to our families and to the community at large in terms of the quality of life that we have here, and that I believe we benefit from greatly in our community. We're in a situation where if we do not get the revenue that we need with a positive vote on the override on May 4, we are going to be making significant cost cuts. So, we have made cost cuts in the past, and I'll talk about that a little later in the presentation. But to me, this is a cautionary piece when people say, "Well, hey, if you live within your means, you don't have the money. Just cut those costs and lay some people off and move forward." I think it's important to remember that, you know, certainly, even any private company, if you cut costs too much, first of all, you lose customers, and we know that that's always a concern if a community declines in quality, that you have flight from the community or flight to other educational options. We can still cost the community money. And at the same time, certainly, no business is going to price itself where they're going to actually charge for revenue less than what it costs to provide that service. And that's the situation we're in because of the structural budget deficit that we have as a challenge in Shrewsbury. So, again, our school district is facing an education emergency. We are facing unprecedented levels of cuts next year at a time coming out of the pandemic when we can ill afford to be reducing the level of services we're providing to our students. Additionally, I would suggest that our town is at a crossroads. This vote on May 4 really is going to be a critically important decision that this community makes with regard to funding town government at a level for municipal services and education services that is adequate to provide the quality this community has become accustomed to and quite frankly, should expect and should provide to its citizens, and in this case, to our students. The question I think that goes with that is, you know, will we invest in Shrewsbury in order to preserve and enhance our town's quality of life? That is the question, I think, that our community is answering on the backside of the ballot that they'll receive on May 4 when they choose to answer yes or no in terms of providing that revenue. This is the question that is unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and Finance Committee that is on the ballot, that is Mrs. Fritz referenced. It's for $9.5 million additional assessment of real estate and personal property taxes for both municipal and school operating expenses starting fiscal year on July 1. A yes vote is of significant benefit to our town. That additional revenue from municipal departments and the school department operating expenses will provide financial stability that really is necessary for us to continue to work productively and successfully to meet our mission. A yes vote also provides fiscal responsibility and transparency. I want to remind those, maybe you are just starting to tune in and pay attention, that there really is a groundbreaking agreement that's been arrived at unanimously between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to exercise fiscal discipline and commit to no additional Proposition 2.5 overrides for at least the next four years by limiting the growth of the budget once this funding comes into play, and by utilizing an approach where there's a stabilization fund, where some of these funds will go in order to draw them down over that period of time, I think, is an excellent approach. It's been used in some other communities in Massachusetts very successfully. And I appreciate that town manager Kevin Mizikar has brought that forward and that the school committee and the selectmen have endorsed that unanimously. We'll be able, with a yes vote, to maintain our current staffing and programming. Critically important is we'll be able to add the staff necessary to properly open the New Beal School. We'll also be able to provide tuition-free full-day kindergarten for all students, which is a promise that we made to the community when the New Beal School came up for a vote several years ago. And we'll also be incrementally restoring positions over time, and that have been cut in previous years. So, you know, next year, in terms of success for our students, we will be able to add, with a yes vote, 32.6 full-time equivalent positions to relieve the elementary overcrowding we've been dealing with for years, to provide full-day kindergarten for all, and to open the New Beal School as planned. It also allows us to keep all of our current positions in programming and to add back four teaching positions, two at Sherwood and two at the high school that were cut this year, that will help us make sure that we're able to provide reasonable class sizes, and at the high school, a better array of course offerings that our students need for success in high school and for their transcript as they apply to colleges. If it fails, we'll be failing to provide for our students next year. We would cut $2.94 million and 48.7 full-time equivalent positions from the budget across all of our grade spans. We don't open the New Beal School as planned. We see significant increases in class sizes and less academic support for students. We would be closing all of our elementary library media centers. We'd be reducing different elements of our special subjects and allied arts programming in grades K through 8. Our high school students will not be able to take all of the AP courses or electives that they're currently signed up for, because we will simply just not have enough teachers to offer all those courses. So, things that many of our high school students are counting on to round out their high school course of study will just simply not be available if we have to cut 12 teachers at the high school, which is under our reduction plan, if we do not get this additional funding. So, again, without sufficient local revenue, we will not, or we will need to rather, make major cuts in personnel and programming. We will not be able to properly open the New Beal School. That will severely compromise our ability to meet students' needs at a critical time when, coming out of this pandemic, they most need our strong support. And severely reducing our school's resources next year will compound these negative effects of the pandemic on our students' well-being and their academic progress, and that is something that I don't think anyone wants to see happen for our students, especially after this challenging year. So, the importance of a yes vote is to provide our schools with the resources they need to ensure that our town's children receive an excellent education. That is something that is just a pretty plain-spoken, clear approach of what this means for us. And before I turn it over, Mr. Collins, to talk about the numbers involved, I did prepare some slides to get at some questions that have been coming up and coming forward, I know to members of the school committee, or coming forward to me as a superintendent, or, you know, people have indicated to me what's been happening. So, before I go on, I'm going to make sure we have any technical difficulties we have to resolve, or are we okay? All right, I'm just going to make sure this monitor is working properly. All right, thank you. So, the first question is that, you know, I thought we already voted to fund a New Beal School. Why wouldn't we be opening a New Beal School? And the fact is that the community did vote to fund the construction of the New Beal School, and that project is on time and it's under budget. Additional funding, however, as we've said all along, is needed to provide enough staff to open the building, absorb students from all the other elementary schools, reduce the overcrowding that we've been dealing with for years. And at the same time, people, it's important to understand, these are two types of funding. The funding the town approved to build the school, the savings, because that project is under budget, can't be then moved to fund staffing in the operations of the school. The great news for taxpayers is that any dollars that we save by coming under budget for the building project means that the amount of taxes they'd be paying for the building project will not be as high as originally projected. So, there certainly is a savings for taxpayers there, and that's a great news story. But, you know, those savings cannot then be just redirected into another account and used for the operations of the school department. So, that's an important distinction that we want to make sure people understand. Next question, we've heard this from time to time. I've heard this over, you know, many years in Shrewsbury. You know, is it true that, you know, we, as a school department, have threatened to make cuts, but we always, quote-unquote, "find the money," and those cuts have never happened? Unfortunately, that's false. We've seen many positions in programs over the years that have been diminished or eliminated that have never returned. Even after the override a few years ago, there were some things that were restored, especially some teachers, because we had really high class sizes at that time, way higher than they should have been. But there were things that have been cut. We had cut back foreign language instruction that used to start in third grade. And we've cut health classes in elementary schools, reduced media aides for our middle and high school. And, you know, back when I started in Shrewsbury, we had a professional-level media specialist in every one of our elementary schools. We've had one for many years overseeing all the elementary schools at the same time. And that position would be cut next year if we don't get the override favorable vote this year. And again, in bold, you see, I mean, this year alone, this current fiscal year, we cut almost 30 positions and almost $2 million from our budget. So, again, this idea that we say we're going to cut things and then we don't really cut them is just absolutely not true. There are some years, thankfully, when there's been some additional funds that have been allocated by the state, which maybe avoided some cuts, but over time, we have made reductions in order to fund sometimes the growth in other parts of the budget because we've had more and more students over time that we've had to service. So, again, it's a myth that we always find find the money. We are extremely transparent. All the information's on our website that anyone wants to look right down to the line item budget in terms of what we're doing financially. Other question I've received is, have school department staff made any financial sacrifices during these challenging times? And the answer to that is yes. The fact is that the unions representing all of our teachers and professional educators, the union representing our assistant principals and athletic director, reduced, or agreed to reduce their contractual salary increases by half this year, and then other administrators, principals, central office administrators, our secretaries and support staff, our IT support staff, all took compensation freezes this year. And all told, all of that together is saving the district over $1 million to avoid an additional $1 million of budget cuts that would have had to happen to balance the budget this year. And those are, you know, real sacrifices that our people have made, and frankly, during a year when they've worked harder than they've ever worked in their lives. So it's something that our employees deserve a lot of credit for. I know employees on the town municipal side also made sacrifices as well. This community can be assured that the employees of this community, they certainly got it in terms of the kind of financial situation we were in because of the pandemic and because of unfortunately, in combination with the structural budget deficit that we've been challenged by. The next question I've received is, you know, is it true that Shrewsbury spends much more than other districts on administration? And the answer there, the fact is that our district ranks 301st out of 320 school districts for administrative costs on a per pupil basis. That's the bottom 6% of the state. The district overall is in the bottom 11% on per pupil expenditures overall. Administration is even further behind as far as part of that total. So, you know, the statistics are very clear that we are spending less, and in most cases, much less than a typical Massachusetts school district on the administration of the school district. Along with that, I've been asked, well, is it true that Shrewsbury has many more assistant superintendents than other districts? Are we top-heavy? Do we have too many district-level administrators? And the information there in this slide is that certainly every district has district-level administrators. Depending on how big the district is, some might have more than others. What they call them may be different as well. A small district might have a curriculum director, for example, whereas we, going back for a long time, have had an assistant superintendent for curriculum. Some districts will have a, what they call a business manager. We did for a long time. As we grew and got to a level where we needed to be more aligned with districts our size, we changed the name to an assistant superintendent for finance and operations. Same thing for our assistant superintendent for student services, which is in charge of our special education program, which with about 1,000 students is frankly is bigger than a lot of districts are in the area. So in terms of assistant superintendents, these are not additional positions compared to other districts. They're titled differently, and they have a very significant span of responsibility, especially, and this was, this was something that surprised me. I had asked Mr. Collins, you know, where do we rank for size now compared to other school districts in Massachusetts? We are actually in Shrewsbury with more than 6,000 students, the 27th largest district out of 320 districts in Massachusetts. That includes every district, including all the cities. If you take the cities out, we are the fifth-largest district in the state. We're in the top 2% for size of non-city districts in the state of Massachusetts. We are not a small operation. And that obviously has changed a lot over time, and if you've lived in the community for a long time, you know, we've more than doubled in student enrollment over the last 20 years, and we are a large district for the state of Massachusetts. Also, in a recent study by the Collins Center at UMass Boston, which the School Committee is familiar with, that we did a couple of years ago of our central office and district administrative function, actually indicated we were understaffed compared to what a typical district our size would be when it comes to district administration. So I think we, you know, and frankly, the folks who do this work, they do, they work incredibly hard. They provide incredible value to this community. The piece at the bottom there, the note, the School Committee is familiar, but those who are watching may not be, that we actually added in 2019 another assistant superintendent position for community partnerships and well-being. That was actually recommended by the UMass study that we had a position like that. That position was funded in its entirety through the generosity of Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union in its first year. That position for this year, under normal circumstances, would have continued, would have been funded in part, continued by the bank. But because of our circumstances, Dr. Lozot, who's in that position, actually has been functioning as the acting principal at Patton School, and she will continue to function in that role next year as well. So that position essentially existed for one year and did not cost a single dollar of district money because it was so generously funded by Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. So again, we try to be extremely transparent about all of this, but I think if someone's trying to paint a picture that somehow we have more positions at a district level, that's just absolutely not the case. We received the question, what's happening with parent fees and tuitions next year? Are they changing if the override passes? And the School Committee did vote at your last meeting to freeze the fees and tuitions at their original levels, that they would have been in place for this current year. Of course, this year, some were adjusted or not assessed at all because of the pandemic. But however, the full-day kindergarten tuition, the School Committee has voted to, with a yes vote for the override, to remove the kindergarten tuition. That was a promise the School Committee made to the community when the Beal School was proposed, and if all goes well and it opens as planned, that's what will happen. So that's where we are when it comes to fees and tuitions. So in conclusion, again, I cannot emphasize enough that our school district is facing an education emergency. We will need to answer the question on Tuesday, will we invest in Shrewsbury in order to preserve and enhance our town's quality of life? And I'll leave you with some lyrics from, some of you know my wife's from Texas, so we usually listen to country music, and there's a famous Tim McGraw song called Humble and Kind, that however, was actually written by a songwriter who grew up and still lives in Massachusetts, in Stoughton, I believe, named Lori McKenna. And this is a line from that song, "When you get where you're going, don't forget to turn back around and help the next one in line." And the reason I put this here is because I think it's just critically important to remind everyone that this is about being a community. And, you know, certainly, I am incredibly grateful that what my family has benefited from over the last 20, almost 25 years now that I've lived in this community, and where my children have gone through the schools and continue to go through the schools, that was made possible by the residents of Shrewsbury, who certainly came before me. And I certainly see it as my responsibility as a resident to turn back around and help those who are coming after my children. We certainly know, and I certainly know, that if you take that per pupil expenditure number and multiply it by my three children, times, you know, 12 or 13 years of, 13 years of education each, that's a pretty big bill, just for the school services they will have received over their school careers. And there's no way that I'm paying that in my taxes over the time that they're in school. I'll be paying that back in taxes for the rest of the time that I'm a resident of Shrewsbury, and hopefully, that's a long time. So, you know, really, to be a true community, it means everyone is supporting the needs of the full community, whether that's public safety, whether that's senior center, whether that's parks and recreation, whether that's the folks doing the great job, making sure our election runs well through the town clerk's office, our DPW, everybody who is doing the work to make this the kind of town that people want to live in and that provides a really high quality of life. So, you know, in terms of, I would suggest respectfully that if someone suggests to, if people are asking, you know, each other as neighbors whether they're supporting the override on May 4th, that if it's, well, you know, my students are done with school, so I'm sort of done paying for that, I really don't think that's the case. And I really hope that they would reconsider and think about the reality that people who came before them paved the way for their children, and that we want to turn around and give a helping hand to all the students who are coming up behind, who can have an equally as good, and hopefully, over time, even better, education, because that's what we should always be striving to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins to give you a couple of the black and white hard numbers here that we'll ask you to vote on this evening, and happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
So just as you can see on the slide here, that the so-called level services budget, just bringing everything forward that's in place right now into next year, and the addition of four additional teaching positions, two at Sherwood for teaching positions there and two at the high school, that total would be an additional six, just over $6 million. And then, in addition to that, for the opening of the Beal School, the K through four grade reconfiguration and the redistricting, and the bringing down of class sizes across all elementary grades, and providing space parity across all of our elementary schools, that's just under $1.7 million for a total increase of just over $7.7 million for an annual operating budget for fiscal '22, $75,722,168. And that's an 11.36% increase. Of course, it is, this is an anomaly type of year. In our budget book, which is on our website, you can see that the past five years, you know, our annual percentage increases have ranged between 2 and 3.5, 3.6%. They've been very moderate, and this is the year that we need to have this type of level of increase. This is a real inflection point in a positive way for our community to open up this great new facility and provide the type of education that we ought to be providing in a community like ours, and that's why this is a larger year. So that's the total ask for fiscal '22. And if I could just make one other comment on what Dr. Sawyer was talking about earlier in terms of, you know, the stability piece, and just for those that, you know, a non-educational reason, if you will, to support the override, and this isn't quite self-evident, if you will, but, you know, the rating agencies who have provided this community with a AAA bond rating, which is the gold standard for bond ratings, it's the highest that you can achieve, and speaks very loudly about the financial stability of a community, we have earned a AAA bond rating, and that's important to maintain for future borrowing because it means you're able to borrow, it's like your credit score. If you have a high credit score, you can borrow at a lower interest rate. And that's what this community has been able to do, and that provides all of us property tax savings in the long term. So the rating agencies actually look at operational overrides as a, as a position of strength, that the community supports investment and reinvestment in the community, maintaining stability, and having this multi-year plan, and having a multi-year financial plan for the future, again, places us in a very small circle of communities in the Commonwealth, and I'd say probably across the state and the nation as well, that are thinking strategic and strategically in these terms. And that's what this override plan is like, and that's why it's different than other overrides. So that's another just non-educational reason to support this year's, this upcoming override ask of $9.5 million and having it be a multi-year plan.
So that's what we have for you this evening. You have the line item budget in your packet. We would ask that you vote this budget plan to bring to town meeting. You know, if the override were not to be successful on Tuesday, the, I would ask, we will obviously make an updated recommendation based on the amount of funding we would have available. But as I've said all along, I remain optimistic that this is a community that supports education. This is a community that will see clearly for all the reasons why, you know, we just explained, and that this is the fiscally responsible choice for our community. And I am hopeful that this will be something, and it will make an incredible difference and bring a high level of stability to enable us to focus on making sure we provide the best education possible to our students. So with that, we're happy to take any questions or comments from the committee.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Lindsay?
One question and then a comment if I, if I might. The question's for you, Patrick, if you don't, if you don't mind. For those who maybe are tuning in a little, little, we've been looking at these numbers for a while. I wonder if you could just spend a minute talking about, when talking to residents of the community, some of them ask, if we have the same number of students, but we're sparing them out over more buildings, why do we need another $1.7 million? And while I've tried to do my best to explain student class sizes, I wonder if you could just talk about the staffing model of shifting from four regional elementary schools to five. We know there's educational benefits, but if you could just talk through that a little bit, I think not everybody's looking at the back page of your budget book.
Sure.
That looks like, that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, on that back page, I'll just, you know, reference that because the staffing plan for the new Beal and the additional positions are detailed on there. So if people wanted to look at that, I would certainly invite them to do that. But, you know, the Beal School, the current Beal School right now, you know, has a total headcount, if you will, enrollment of about 300 students. And we're operating in, also have had to operate every year with this kind of half-day kindergarten model because we didn't have enough seats. So as a result, you know, building the new Beal School, which has capacity for 790 students and allows for future enrollment growth as well, is a much larger school. And so as a result of that, we have scaled the staffing pattern to look much like what it is for the Floral Street School. So that's kind of the template, if you will. And for a school that size, which is basically double the size of Spring, Patton, or Coolidge, we really need to have, for example, an assistant principal there to help manage that large student body. We would need, and we have planned for, an additional secretary to help support that school and be responsive to parents. And, you know, the other part of this is, that's kind of implicit in this budget plan, is drawing down the enrollment populations at Spring, Patton, and Coolidge so that we can provide an equity of space. So, for example, we need to have a dedicated music space at Spring Street School. And so, you know, that, that's what the drawing down of the enrollment is going to do, for example. But we can't draw down the principal. The principal still needs to be there. And so while there might be, for example, you know, 380 students at Spring Street School, and we draw down the population to, you know, closer to 300, we still need to have one principal there. So that's what kind of is implicitly in the kind of total cost of operations here, if you will, of moving towards this grade reconfiguration and having a larger school, and that what speaks to the additional staffing that's needed. So hopefully, that kind of helps answer the question, you know, if people want to see what the detailed staffing pattern looks like, it is in the back of the budget book, and includes, you know, all the regular education, classroom teaches, teachers, art teacher, music, all the special education staffing, school nurse, you know, we need to have a staffing level there, similar to Floral Street School. We need 1.4 nurses there for a population of that size. So hopefully, that gives people a little bit more information.
Would it be fair to say that by, in addition to, you know, spreading out all of the students by offering full-day kindergarten instead of half-day kindergarten, you have multiple teachers who had double the number of students and were sort of flipping that on its head? And now we need, we need twice as many teachers as we had to offer, to offer half-day kindergarten or to make that, fulfill that promise that was made to the community when, when we voted on Beal as it being another piece of this calculus?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
If I, if I can, I think, thank you for, for the help there. I've heard that question asked a few times, so I just wanted to get a little clarity. When I look back, I'm, I am, I should just say, certainly supportive of the recommendation by Dr. Sawyer tonight. And when I think about where this community is at, I want us to be a community that invests in education, that I moved to this community partially because of the high-quality schools and my belief that we invested in education. But the reality is, is that we, we haven't kept pace, that we, by not voting for an override, our community risks doing incredible harm to our students, harm to our educators in terms of morale and flight from this, this district that just doesn't seem to care, between the loss of the additional positions, not opening Beal, not offering full-day kindergarten, getting rid of media centers, and the list goes on, on, and on. I have had, heard some say that we, we haven't exhausted other revenue options, and I think that is patently untrue, that we have higher fees than any of our neighboring communities, that we have done fundraising, punching far outside our weight class in terms of raising outside revenue for, for this district. People ask about the federal funds, and, and as much as we try to explain that that, well, that seems lovely, that that's not the answer to an ongoing structural deficit of those one-time funds. And so where we get to is our tax levy is simply insufficient for what, for what we need, that we are in the we are in the bottom 11% of per pupil expenditures in the state, and I have said it before, and I'll say it again, it's shameful. I also know that who decides in this community on municipal elections is a very small number of people, and our community gets to decide if they want that to be the case. That when we look at the last bunch of May municipal elections, voter turnout is between 6% and 20%. And so if people care, and I believe they do, and I appreciate Dr. Sawyer's optimism about all of this, that it is incumbent upon them to get out to the polls. The polls are open tomorrow, tomorrow in the evening, that you can drop off your ballot by mail if you received it in the ballot box just outside of this building. And if you care about our kids, that you need to show up to the polls on May 4th and cast that ballot and cast that yes vote, because I, for one, don't want to be here on May 5th coming up with the Plan B, because Plan B is frankly catastrophic. So I am cautiously optimistic that the community is going to do the right thing, but those voter turnout numbers alarm me, and we need people to get out to the polls, and that's what's going to save the day here. So hopefully the community appreciates their critically important role and that Proposition 2 and 1/2 left it in their hands. So I hope that they appreciate the enormity of the situation and that responsibility and get out to vote. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay. Mr. Collins, before we move on to the rest of the committee members, could you briefly explain about stimulus funding? Because I know that's something that is still being talked about in social media and how that is not going to save the day.
Sure. Yeah, again, if people were interested in details, you know that there's a detailed report with all of the grant funds the school district has received, how we've used those funds, those reports are on our website. So if people are really interested, they'll go look there. I can tell you briefly that the school district, our school district, just like every other school district in the nation, has received federal stimulus funding by various formulas, and that those monies have each been, there's various buckets of monies, and we've received both federal and state dollars, and that those dollars that the school department is receiving directly are targeted for restricted use for COVID-related expenses. And they also have deadlines of use, so they're time-restricted. And this is one-time money. This is for the purposes of making remedy and supporting education during the very difficult time of COVID. It's not to provide long-term funding stream, which is what we need, that recurring revenue stream in order to provide and maintain that level of stability that we're all looking for and want to have every year, as opposed to every year just trying to wing it, you know, how much money do we got this year, how much do we have to cut, and whatnot. So the stimulus funding has been used for COVID surveillance testing, it's been used for the tents that Dr. Sawyer mentioned, it's used for the furniture that Dr. Sawyer mentioned, it's been used for additional nursing services, it's been used for additional staffing called COVID assistance, to help clean surfaces during the school day and clean tables in between cafeteria services, and we'll continue to use those dollars in that way. This latest round of, this last round of funding that was granted during the newly minted Biden administration, that is not actually, we've heard about the amounts, but it's not actually been materialized yet. We're hoping that it will be in the month of May and that that will be effective for the upcoming fiscal year. But 20%, 20% of those dollars need to be set aside, not only are they restricted for COVID use, but then they're sub-restricted or more restricted, whereas 20% of that has to be used specifically for academic recovery. So we're going to be contracting with educational staff, for example, for an upcoming summer school program, and maybe some additional support services during the school year and maybe next summer to help get students back quickly up to speed again with learning loss. So that's why those funds cannot be used for other purposes to help remedy our situation.
Thank you. Jason?
I support the FY '22 budget recommendation that is before us tonight and has been before us for a while, although it occurs to me that it's not really our decision, is it? In a literal legal sense, it is our decision as a school committee to set a budget, to recommend a budget to town meeting, to go to town meeting with the bottom-line number. But whether or not we're going to have the revenues to make this reality is not a decision that is going to be made in this room. It's a decision that's going to be made in our broader community. It's been made over the past few days. It'll be continued to be made in the days to come. It's rare in a democracy for things to happen quickly, because a democracy is a form of government that tries to take everyone's views into account, and that's a slow process. It's rare in a republic where people elect others to make decisions for them, for members of a community to have such a direct impact on a very specific policy choice. We're usually electing other people to make policy choices and trusting that they'll do the right thing. But this is a rather exceptional example where members of this community will get to themselves, make a very specific policy choice, which will have very significant ramifications very quickly. At the end of this decision next week, our two different versions of Shrewsbury Public Schools. There is the version that is outlined in the recommendation that I hope this body votes to recommend tonight, which is a version of Shrewsbury Public Schools that I think reflects the gem that this district has been for our community, that reflects what many families thought their children would be educated with when they came here, whether they've come here recently and their kids are being educated now, or whether they made that choice 10 years ago, 20 years ago, a generation ago, or more. The version of Shrewsbury Public Schools in this budget is reflective of what we know our community wants and deserves. There is another version that is a shell of this, and that will be very, very difficult for, to meet the needs of our students and to meet the expectations of families and residents. This is a decision that will have consequences for many years to come. So as we take this vote tonight, it just continues to dawn on me that we are not really making the decision. We are ready to allocate these funds in a responsible manner should the community choose to invest them in this district and in this community. But if not, it will be a very different set of circumstances, and it occurs to me that this is one of those situations where we, and I don't mean we, us around this table, I mean the we, the we of you who are at home watching, we are the heroes we're waiting for. We are the community that needs to decide what our community is going to be. We need to provide the resources necessary to do that. So I'll be supporting the recommendation tonight, but it is on this community to decide whether or not that will become a reality.
Thank you. Dale?
I, we've heard all the reasons this evening why we have so much to be proud of with the school district and so much reason to vote yes for the override. And I support the motion that's about to be made to present this budget to the town meeting. I believe also that the majority of people in Shrewsbury want what's good for Shrewsbury. They have a sense of commitment to the community. They want to do what's best for the schools, whether or not they have a child in the school district. But the argument for many people is going to be so obvious that they may figure it's a slam dunk, that it's nothing to worry about. And what I'm most worried about is that everyone who agrees with this override and who feels that it's important has to go and vote, because there's a nucleus of people who are simply going to vote their wallets regardless of the harm it does to the rest of the community, and they're going to vote. And so I would just highlight the fact that everybody who supports this should make it a priority, put Post-it notes around the house, vote early, put a string around your finger, and get in and vote.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, and I do support the budget proposal that Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins presented. I don't think we can say it enough, that the stakes are very high here. There is a cost to a no vote. It's a significant one. It's not free, and the impact is far-reaching. Not only will we see impacts to Shrewsbury Public Schools, but if anybody watched last night's Board of Selectmen meeting, there was discussions around the impact to town services as well. In terms of schools, I know we've been talking about it since January, reductions in staff that are critical to servicing the needs of our students as we enter this post-pandemic phase of public education. And we know that we entered this year with a reduction of 30 staff members, and to have it reduced by another 48, and then the risk of not opening Beal School with another 32 staff needed at that school, I mean, we're talking about 110 positions in about two school years, in addition to the programming, the classes that'll need to be cut, the class sizes upwards of 30-plus. And opening the new Beal School is at risk. We've talked about that, and we know that we're one of few communities that receive reimbursement from the states for that building, and there is a financial obligation there. And when we started the discussion with the Board of Selectmen, we talked about the impact of schools, but it evolved into a much broader discussion on what's best for the town, you know? And I think the framework that is in place for this operational override question is not just about schools, it's about all town services. So I think it's important to note, it doesn't stop at no. Certainly, this board will have to reconvene on May 5th to have more discussions, but we know that Plan A is a yes to override, to fund the future of this town for at least the next four years. It's a fiscally responsible, predictable plan that answers 15 years of fiscal studies that show a structural deficit in this town. At some point, that has to end. So I do support the plan that Dr. Sawyer has put forth, and I would encourage the public to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I also support this budget recommendation, this line item budget that we have, and for anybody watching, it is in our book. You can look at the line item and see where all of, every penny is going for anybody who doubts what this budget represents. We know last year there was a significant budget decrease, and this is due to the fact that we continually deal with a structural budget deficit, and this is something for the past 15-plus years. So we are presented with an operational override that will have short and long-term fixes, which is something that we have not had before. And I think that's something that the community really needs to look at. The operational override in 2014 was extremely helpful, but it was also a stopgap. It didn't provide the long-term solution that we needed. So at this point, there's a couple of things that I want to say, because I think looking at social media, we've had some, there's some misinformation out there. And one of the items that is, that the school department and the school committee has wasteful spending. And I think, you know, the data clearly shows if we're spending in the bottom 11% of all districts in Massachusetts for per pupil spending, we are not wastefully spending. We carefully spend every penny, and we have very strong results. And I think that's something that the community can trust. The commitment between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to have predictable, stable, going forward for at least four years, is a commitment that the community can trust in, and every penny is spent wisely. Another comment that has been in social media is that the members of the school committee are biased in their decision-making as they have children in the district. And at this point, there are only two members that have children in the district. Several of us, our children have long graduated, and we are elected school committee members, so we absolutely advocate for educational services. That is what we are elected to do, but we don't make that in a vacuum. We absolutely consider the taxpayers. We are all taxpayers ourselves. So anything that we do, we do think of it holistically. We work with the Board of Selectmen, the finance committee members, to make sure that we are making decisions that are right for the community. So I think that's something that, you know, we want to make sure that everybody knows this is not done in a vacuum. We're making sure it's done with the best interests of everybody involved. And if we're being called biased because we're making good decisions for children, I will wear that label proudly. Another comment, I think in Dr. Sawyer did touch upon it, is that our administrators are top-heavy or are paid too much. And again, the data definitely proves that that is not the case. Everyone is entitled to their opinions, but I think we have to be very careful about making sure that information is correct when it's in a public forum, so that everyone is making decisions on this vote with the proper information. And another comment that was made, and Lindsay did touch upon it, is why isn't the school department looking for alternative sources of income? We've been doing this for years. This is a district that continually looks for ways to raise funds. We have some of the highest, if not the highest, fees across the state. We look for money for grants. Our PTOs raise funds, private donations, the Colonial Fund, and one of the biggest fundraisers that I can ever remember is the amount of money that we raised for the turf field. How much was that, Mr. Collins?
1.83 million.
Yeah, and for a public school to raise that much money for a turf field is pretty much unheard of. So we look for ways to do everything we can to supplement the budget. So I think for anybody who's listening or watching, every avenue is looked at. So at this point, you know, we've worked with the Board of Selectmen, with Mr. Mizikhar, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, and the operational override before us is absolutely an opportunity to correct where we're going. I think the Board of Selectmen meeting last night and the discussion that they had talking about the municipal services, and this is not a school issue, this is a school and municipal issue, and I thought it was very telling. John LeBeau, Board of Selectmen, he's been on the Board of Selectmen for a very long time, and listening to him talk about the issues in the community and how devastating it could be to both school and municipal services really struck me as telling, because he's been here a lot longer than the rest of us and can see that this is probably the time that we really all need to pay attention and make sure that we vote. As Jason said, this is a time where we're not making the decision. It's going to be the voters of this community, and local elections really affect us more. This is where we live. So again, I think everybody has to vote, make sure that they decide what's best for their family, and get out and vote. Mr. Collins talked about, you know, losing that triple bond rating, AAA bond rating, that can affect going forward how we borrow money. There's lots of issues, and John touched upon the MSBA. I mean, we have been told if we do not open the Beal School upon completion of construction, that is a legal agreement with the state. We can be asked to pay back any funds that they have given to us to open that, for construction of that school. That would be another issue that this community is going to have to deal with. So there's a lot riding on this. But for us as school committee members, it's the educational services going forward for students. I know my children are long out of school, and I look at what this community did for them, and I think we owe it to the students now going forward to make sure that they're getting the same educational services. So I, again, I fully support this and encourage everyone to vote. Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
I would just hold up an exhibit. This is kind of our closing arguments, I guess. This was in the back of the budget book. When it comes to raising funds in a non-traditional manner, last year, the school district was given a statewide award, the Donald Johnson Operational and Cost Efficiency Award, for extraordinary efforts to improve operational efficiency and enhance operations for the betterment of education. And this was awarded last June by the Massachusetts School Business Officials Organization. And, you know, Shrewsbury was third, only behind Boston and Springfield in raising private funds among any school district in the state, raised over $267,000 at that time, and it's been more since the telethon recently through the Colonial Fund, since it was created in 2012. The turf campaign for the high school athletic contest, $1.82 million. The race student and school lunch debt piece, over $6,000 of generous donors to help families who are struggling paying back their fees or their lunch costs. The $400,000 from the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that they've pledged, including the van that we, people see driving around with the school district logo and the bank logo, you know, that was not purchased with tax dollars, that was purchased with a private donation from Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, Central One Federal Credit Union, major donor to the field project. So, I mean, there is not, I am very proud of the work this district has done to find alternative ways to provide funding for educational services and benefits to our students that have not cost the taxpayers a dime. So, you know, certainly, it is, there is no argument to be made that we haven't looked at every opportunity we can to provide alternative sources of funding, and we're very proud of the work we've done there.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything from the committee?
May have a motion that the committee vote to recommend a fiscal year 2022 town-appropriated school department budget of 75,722,168 for town meeting approval.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from the school committee meeting held on April 7th, 2021, and the school committee workshop held on April 14th, 2021. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they can be marked as accepted as distributed. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7. Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Purpose 3. The Shrewsbury Education Association units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Professional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose 2, non-represented administrators, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment for the evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wenski?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.